Perfect. So, first off, budget documents. I put it in Board Docs today and they're on the back table if people want to see them. We, we, the budget's outlined for all the different funds that we're going to be talking about tonight and gives a history of two years ago what we spent, last year's budget, what we spent last year, and then next year's budget, and then a percentage change, I'm saying it really loud, a percentage change between the two of them. So, that's a document that's in, again, Board Docs. So, again, some of this for the school board, you've heard this, but for the public, just reminding people, we're in the second year of the state budget. We know we're going to get $325 more per student, which to some people sounds like a lot of money, but when you do that $325 over what we spend per student, about 13,000, that's really only a 2.4% increase. So, that 2.4% definitely doesn't keep up with inflation, doesn't keep up with, you'll see later, that we gave our employees about a 5% salary increase. So, you can see there's a big disconnect from our expenses and what the state's giving us for an increase in a per-spending amount, so 2.4%. There was a large increase in equalized aid. You'll see that later in the presentation, but remember that that goes towards property tax relief. It does not go for increased spending for the district and very, very minimal increase in special education aid reimbursement, and I'll hit on that a little bit later, too. So, this just, it's a chart showing, again, kind of how the revenue cap over the last 15 years has not kept up with inflation. So, if we were to get inflationary increases on a revenue cap basis, we would have about $3,380 more to spend per student, just if we got inflation. But that, as we all know, hasn't happened, again, starting in about 2010. So, and I don't have it on the slide, but if you did the math with our 8,400 students, that's about a $27 million difference between what we would receive with inflation versus what the state has allowed us to spend. Just again, because I think it's really important to talk about that state budget. So, in 2002, the state of Wisconsin ranked 11th in the country on spending for public school education, and 20 years later, we've dropped to 25th. So, really dramatic decrease in spending for public education, and that rating will just go down even further, because even, that's not factored into the last two years, we've got a zero increase from the state. Shifting gears to strategic-based budgeting, you've heard me talk about that, maybe not the public, but I've heard me talk about strategic-based budgeting. We really spent a lot of time with that, with senior leaders in the district, that when we add things to the budget, or when we're reviewing things in the budget, how are we building that budget and is it strategic? So, a lot of things we look at, you'll see some analytics tonight that we look at from Forecast 5. You've seen budget forecast models that I've presented to the school board that happens in January. So, again, lots of thought given into the how we build our budget. So, as I mentioned, we do have things that we add to the budget, and it goes through a strategic budget scorecard, I guess. The 10 items that we look like, or look at or on there, I'm not going to read all 10 of those, but you can see, people can see what those are. Is it ongoing cost? Who's the cabinet leader? Things like that. So, we really, again, when we look at our budget, we're, and especially if we're increasing an area, we want to make sure it's strategic. So, things that were added into the 24-25 budget, you can see those listed here. We did add, I'll just read through them, because I think they are noteworthy. So, the first thing, and the school board definitely knows about this one, we added $1 million to the TLE budget for sixth through 12th grade literacy and math curriculum material. We're subsidizing some childcare at PPA. We also, we heard the school board, especially when we were adding an FTE, one of the things that the school board has said is, we should also make sure, not make sure, but look at things that we can reduce. So, we have reduced some FTE at the high school level, two staff members. We've also reduced at PPA, the GTO position from full-time to half-time. And our AVID PD budget, we felt that we could reduce in that area. So, just want to point that out. We did add a halftime psych position at Prairie View Middle School, a behavior specialist at Prairie View Middle School. That's a one-year-only position for next year. We expanded the AP contract, or high school assistant principal, associate principal contracts, a full year. We, and then with the last thing, or second-to-last thing, we increased the school counselor's budget, a full-time counselor, or a halftime counselor at each high school, so 1.0 FTE total. And then the school board professional development budget was increased by 20,000. So, all those things add up to $1 million, or just over $1 million. So, again, if you're, the public's curious about that, we go through a pretty detailed process to get to that point. So, revenue limit calculation, again, all school districts in the state of Wisconsin are mandated to follow what's revenue limits. They've been in place since 1993. There's a enrollment factor, it's a three-year average membership factors into, to the revenue cap. As I mentioned before, there's $325 more we get to spend per student, so that, that's, again, for all school districts, not just Sun Prairie. And then, really, revenue limits is just a combination of how much we tax and how much equalized aid we got. So, again, really controls what we and all school districts can spend. So, it's really now focusing on that membership. So, membership, remember, includes summer school. We get a little bit of credit for summer school students. We get 60% credit for 4K students, because they don't attend for a full day. But our membership count, you can see the last, again, three-year trend, the last three years, you can see that our three-year average for membership is about 8,263. Remember, enrollment's about 8,500 kids. So, enrollment, we've talked to the school board about this. The budget that you see in front of you tonight is based on an increase of 60 students. University of Wisconsin enrollment projections, which reports to the school board every December, did a forecast, and their forecast for next year is a decrease of 22 students. Last year's enrollment, including summer school, increased by 22 students. And you might be wondering, well, if APL is projecting a decrease of 22 students, why would we base the budget on 60 students? We track enrollments very carefully diligently in the district, weekly through the summer, and actually, we, daily, and a few days, or a few more days, it would be daily. And I can say right now, our enrollment, if we started school, we'd be up 100 students from last year's Third Friday count. So, a lot of flex in there. Some students move off, say, in August, we have students move in, but again, if we started school right now, we'd be up 100 students from last year's Third Friday count. This is just a history of our 10-year Third Friday enrollment, going back 10 years ago for the first four, actually, five years. You can see we had pretty steady enrollment growth. Then we started to have a little bit of decline, especially during the COVID years. And then, last year, you can see just a slight bump up. We went up 66 kids last year. So, if we go up another 100 kids this year, then you can say we've reversed that trend of declining enrollments and potentially having an increase in enrollment again for Sun Prairie. So, equalized aid, I mentioned that that's a big pot of money that we and all districts receive from the state. The July 1 estimate from DPI for Sun Prairie was an increase of 8.5%. Again, remember, that doesn't help the budget per se in spending more, it just shifts money away from taxes. That is a $4.8 million increase in equalized aid. And again, that's based on July 1, and I mentioned at a school board meeting a couple weeks ago, but for the public, you might have read, there's a lot of news about Milwaukee School District and their financial reporting issues that they've had, and definitely have to be really careful with information we're getting from DPI, because Milwaukee School District's about 20 or 25% of our whole state. So, just be a little careful with numbers that we get from DPI. But right now, our estimate is about an 8.5% increase in equalized aid. So, I like to include this chart for the public. Equalized aid is based on a district, how many students they have, what they spend, and then also how much, what kind of property value that district has. So, a district that is very property wealthy, like Elmbrook, gets very little equalized aid based on the formula. It's a very, pretty detailed formula. Sun Prairie, you can see where we're in the middle of the districts that we compare to, above and below us in size. And then, Ressine and Sheboygan, who don't have much property value on a per-student basis, get, they receive a lot more equalized aid. So, again, just information for the public, if you're curious, like, why do we get the aid that we do, and how's it compared to other districts? Last time I probably mentioned it, but again, the budget's based on an increase of $325 per student, increase to the revenue limit. And, and then we did see some small increases in our special ed aid, too. So, just a little bit more on expenditures. So, 81% of our budget is salary and benefits, which is pretty typical for, actually, very typical for most school districts. And that's, our overall budget's about 135 million, so 81% of that's 114 million. And then, we've talked to the school board a lot about this. We also know the state of Wisconsin and the federal government doesn't fully fund special education. In fact, the district has to allocate $16.7 million to get up to full funding of special ed. So, the aid that we get from the state and federal government is $16.7 million short of fully funding it. Another slide I like to include in this presentation, just to remind people, we do have class-sized guidelines, and you can see those here. And just knowing that we, again, we follow student enrollment very closely and staffing, and we stick to these guidelines really close. Speaking of staffing changes, there's always some staffing changes in the budget. Transfer service reflects if we have a special ed student or a dual-language student moving into the district, we might be able to get transfer service for that, and I can go into more detail if people have questions. Sometimes we have grant money that comes in the district or out of the district. I talked about the strategic budget initiatives, that, why there could be a staffing change for that. And then the fourth one is enrollment, right? Goes up or down. Some schools go up, some levels go up, some go down. So, those are the main reasons you'll see staffing changes. So, with that said, you can see we're adding three staff members to the budget. They're all in professional ed, they're teachers. Two of them are for special, transfer service, they're for, in the special ed area. We did, are going to receive a little bit less AGR, or Sage Aid for CH Bird, so they're going down a half a staff member. I talked about the budget initiatives before, there's a 1.0 for that. And then, enrollment for the whole district, K-12, again, there's some pluses, some minuses, but overall, it's a half a, half a position. So, the math on that, again, it's three positions for the district being added, with, what, 2/3 of that being added from transfer service. And then, want to spend quite a bit of time, because salary and benefits, again, is 81% of our budget, so spend some time on where we're at. Salary and benefits is definitely in action of the school board. Some of these things have been acted on, some have not been. Professional educators, teachers, will receive a COLA increase of 4.12%. On top of that, the teachers who get, or complete 24 hours of professional development earn an additional 1.25%. So, in aggregate, it's about a 5% increase for teachers. And let's, you can see the cost there for that, or 5.12% is the cost salary increase for teachers. For the other groups, I won't spend a lot of time. All three groups will get the COLA increase of 4.12%. They all have a little bit different PD increases, and you can see that listed here, too. But the main takeaway is the school board did grant all staff a 4.12% increase and professional development increase. Talking to staff, again, where we're at with our staffing ratios, so this is all staff. This would be all the four groups that I just mentioned, and how we compare to the other 14 or 15 districts in Dane County. You can see that we're on the right-hand side, so we're a little bit more richly staffed than most districts. The school board has definitely talked about this a lot in the last few months, but you can see where other districts come in and where Sun Prairie is. Again, we're a little bit more, I guess, richly staffed than some districts, but that, not as richly as two or three of the districts. On benefits side, so salary and benefits, the other part of it is health benefits. Health insurance is projected to go up 12%. We've had, again, when I say projected, the school board still has not acted on that, but will in the next couple of months, for sure. Our school board, our health insurance renewal is January 1, so a 12% increase actually hits the budget by 6%. We do spend a lot of money on health insurance, though, it is $14.1 million of our budget. Dental insurance, we're self-funded there and have, we haven't had a dental increase in probably six or seven years now. So, again, a 0% increase on dental. We spent $1.4 million on dental. WRS stands for Wisconsin Retirement System. That's the pension that all district employees are in. Projected to get a 0% increase from WRS. We should finalize that in the next few days or a few weeks. And the district spends about $5.6 million on WRS for its employees. So, do want to point this out, especially for the public, because of the shortfall from the state and how we've had to increase salaries and many other factors, our revenue budget is about 132 million, expense is about 135.5 million. So, the school board has said that the balance for this one year, not ongoing, but for the 24-25 budget, would come from fund balance. So, if everything worked out throughout the year, which it doesn't, there's millions of variables, but if it worked out the way it is on the paper right now, on the budget, we would be taking $3.6 million from fund balance for the 24-25 budget. Then, so what I've spent the last 10 or 15 minutes on was the general budget, where most of the spending occurs, but we do have other budgets in the overall budget. Special education is about 24 million. You can see our debt service, that's for loans or bonds that we've taken out to build schools. We're still spending a little bit of money on construction. School nutrition, 4.5 million, and then community service fund is 1.2 million. So, all in, our total budget for the district's about 182 million or 183 million. Just mentioned the debt levy. That's for voter-approved referendum projects, the ones, we have 20-year timeframe on that, so actually, like Horizon is falling off of our debt schedule. But our overall debt schedule for next year payment is $24.2 million. Then the other levy that we have, so we have general fund levy, debt service fund levy, and then community service levy. Community service is for things like community schools, custodians for after-school events, facility rental coordinator, the PAC manager, assistant managers, the pool assistant managers, and then we have some, a couple of community liaison positions. The levy for that fund is $1 million. We have built up a little bit of carryover in that account, so we will be spending down a little bit of carryover there, and it's called Fund 80, community service levy. So, the overall tax levy increase as of right now, our general fund is expected to go down. Again, we, remember, we had that large increase in equalized aid. Our debt levy is going up quite a bit, but it's a little misleading, because we've been transferring money in from the past referendum, 3 million a year, so that's a little bit misleading there on the debt levy. And the community service levy's going up by 50,000. Total levy for the district would be $80 million, or a 2.7% increase, using a 10% increase in property values, which is fairly conservative. Last year, we grew by 13 or 14%. Our mill rate would currently is $9.86 last year, is projected to drop to $9.21. So, a big caveat on there, obviously, this is a projection. We don't know property values yet, we don't know equalized aid, we don't know enrollment, a lot of different things there, and we're, I know, the school boards definitely talked about a referendum, but there's no official action on that, and obviously, it hasn't passed. So, that mill rate is very much in flux, but as of this kind of snapshot in time, that's where the mill rate would be. Added this slide, want to, haven't spent too much time with the public, talking about the cost of charter and voucher schools to Sun Prairie taxpayers. So, $1.1 million of our tax levy goes directly to charter and voucher programs. So, it's money that we put on our tax rolls mandated by the state that we need to do that. So, that money just gets transferred to those schools from our district, actually, through DPI, but it's $1.1 million that gets added to that tax levy I talked about just a minute ago. That is the cost of charter and voucher programs for the Sun Prairie School District. Next, a couple of slides, spend a little time on fund balance, especially this year, because remember, if the budget works out, it would work out perfectly, which it won't, but we, it is a, a deficit budget. So, want to talk about fund balance. So, our fund balance, you'll see in the next couple of charts on how we stack up for fund balance. This chart, again, compares us to the districts above us and below us in size. And the red arrow shows where Sun Prairie is. So, our fund balance is on the lower end of districts, not the lowest, which is good that we're not the lowest, but definitely not the highest. There's some districts that have a much larger percentage of fund balance than us. But our fund balance, again, on the lower end, just good for reference. But the good news is, on this chart, is actually Sun Prairie's fund balance over the last 10 years, and you can see how we've grown it considerably over the last six or seven years. And that's really a commitment by the school board at that time, or over those years, by Dr. Seren and other people, saying, hey, we, our fund balance needs to increase for lots of reasons, for short-term borrowing, for when we go out and get bonds, for building projects, for things like that. But, so the good news is our fund balance has been increasing. That helps us out, so that, like, the next year, 24-25, if we do have to draw down some fund balance, we have some money that's set aside that we can do that. So, wrapping this up, kind of where we're at is, we're just finishing up the 23-24 fiscal year, where the audit is next week. Still bills coming in, still some things I need to review to make sure where that budget ends, if we need to make any adjustments for the budget that you see in front of you tonight. Then, August 26, or September, or September 19, the school board would act on the proposed budget, probably August 26. And then, October 7 is this electors meeting, or the annual meeting, where the electors vote on the tax levy, so that's October 7. And then, a whole bunch of stuff happen, happens in October. We, we know our Third Friday count, we know the property values, what they came in at, we know how much state aid we're going to get. So then, in a short couple of weeks, we turn that all around, and by the end of October, the school board approves the original budget, which, if we have a referendum, we'll have to talk about how that, what that budget will look like. Could be, this year for the school board, could be actually approving two different budgets, one if the referendum passes, one if it doesn't. But, but, take away a whole bunch of stuff happens in October, and by the end of October, early November, we have a budget in place. So, with that, I would think we turn it over to the public and see if they have questions and comments. Looking good, okay.
Yeah, okay, all right. Do we want to go around the circle here? Do you have any comments or questions?
This is a real small one, just really out of curiosity, if nothing else. I just noticed that student fees decreased a ton over the last few years, and I, I appreciate that as a parent, but just, can you explain why?
So, that was initiative one or two years ago now, probably last year, I think was the first year we implemented that. One, is we did want to reduce students' fees as much as we could. We also went to a common fee, where in the past, a high school student might have an art fee, a face fee, or tech ed fee. Now, we just have one fee for a high school student to make it, A, simpler in families and simpler on administration. So, a couple of things. One, we reduced it somewhat. Two, we did that. And the, the third thing I will point out is, there is some budget adjustments that happen throughout the year, so when we collect fees, then that budget is increased. So, it's, all three of those factors play into that.
Awesome. Well, that's, I think that's really great that we did that, so. Thanks, everybody, whoever idea that was.
I just have one small question as well. You mentioned that we had a couple of community liaisons, and I, one, can you tell me who those community liaisons are?
So, I think what Phil meant to say is, we have allocated two positions. Only one of them is filled right now, and that's currently filled by Brianna Kerlinkis. No, those are funded through multilingual transfer service funding. So, but we did have a second position allocated, it's just not currently filled.
Thanks, Phil. I also just had, and I may, we may have had this conversation before, but I can't recall the answer, so I'll just ask again, just a couple of questions on the strategic budgeting, staffing pieces. The behavior, behavior specialist at Prairie View, just interested in sort of the thinking there, what will this person do and why, just at Prairie View?
So, that was actually a part of desire to address some data that was coming out of Prairie View a year ago. So, we actually had added the position as a one-year position, as a 1.0 for 23-24, and with the idea that that would help create systems to better address and process behavioral referrals at Prairie View. Through review of that, the intent was that it, that was only going to be for 23-24. We have seen a continued need at Prairie View for that FTE, but what we did was also recognize that they're creeping up past the recommended ratios for psychologists. And so, what we did, instead of keeping a 1.0 behavior specialist, we said, we really, what we really need to do is allocate the correct amount of psychologist FTE, and for one more year, bring that behavior specialist down to a 0.5, and then continue to work with the leadership team there to develop systems to support behavior management.
So, if I'm hearing you correctly, the plan is to phase that position out?
Correct.
After 24-25?
Yep.
Got it. I'm assuming that the, the reduction in the PPL, PPA GTO, say that five times, the PPA GTO position is due to just enrollment numbers in that program?
Correct, and that's after multiple years, so the data demonstrates that we didn't need a full-time FTE for the number of students that were entering the program.
And there won't be any, I guess this goes without saying, but I just want to say it, there won't be any reduction in the level of service to students, current students in that program?
That was why the decision was made, is because we could serve the same number of students in the half FTE.
Yep. Last question, maybe. Why do AP contracts need to be 260 now?
Yeah, that's a good question. So, you'll notice on here that we flagged SR2, SR3, and OE4, and it's really because our high school principals are managing really large buildings that require a lot of preplanning in order to ensure a successful school year. And our high school APs had limited contracts and weren't back until the second week of August, and were gone after, two weeks after the school year somewhere. So, a large portion of the summer where they were off-contract. And we just really felt strongly in working with the TLE leadership team, as well as the high school principals of East and West, that was more desirable to have full-time, year-round APs to help facilitate that preplanning and development for the coming school year.
Got it, yep. Agreed. I think that is all. Thank you.
No questions. I do have a small question, but I would just like to make a comment before. I do think it's a little disappointing that the district didn't advertise the public hearing better, because there's nobody here, and it's not on any of the social media pages, which is just a little shady to me personally. And I think that this is really good, important information that could provide a lot of background information to community members on why they should vote for a referendum, because the state hasn't been keeping up. And then, my question was, why does the school board, and that wasn't told you, but why does the school board have to adopt the budget by October 31st as opposed to, like, November 6th or 5th?
Yep, state statute. So, so much of what we do is dictated by state statute. So, end of October, the board has to approve the budget and the levy. So, what will happen this year, probably, is we'll have two budgets, one if the referendum would pass, one if it went, and then, that's how it works. But yeah, it's a state statute.
I also just want to note that this isn't the public's, this is a legally-required public hearing, but this isn't actually the only time the public has input on the budget. Actually, the, kind of the time that is more up in everyone's consciousness is the annual meeting, which is coming up on?
October 7.
October 7. Oh, yeah, it's right there. So, that's really the time where the public runs that meeting, and at that meeting, that's where the public votes on the tax levy. And so, that's, we promote that a lot more than the public hearing. The public can't take any action tonight, it's just a public hearing. At the electors, at the annual meeting, the electors actually vote.
Is this information at the October 7?
A lot of it is, is the same, because the budget, there will be some changes, as Phil said, some things will change between now and then, we'll have updated information, but a lot of the same information goes into that annual meeting.
Let me just follow up with Isabella's question. So, was there not any?
So, was there not anything on social media or any of the sites advertising the budget hearing?
I think it, I think it just said it was a school board meeting.
Okay. Because I, I agree. I think regardless of what happens at the annual meeting, it's disappointing that if we're having this, that we didn't advertise it. That doesn't make any sense to me. So, I, great point, and I, I mean, it's silly to have a public hearing for the public, and then we don't advertise it to the public. I, I don't, I don't get it. So, and I agree, especially as we're looking to go to referendum in, in November. So, that doesn't make any sense to me whatsoever. So, thank you for, for bringing that up. Do we ever do a zero-based budget process?
We've done that in the past. The district office or department budgets really start that way each year, by reviewing their budget. So, departments, yes. The schools, Sun Prairie East has done it a little bit, but the other schools have not.
And, and maybe it's not as important, considering getting one percent of our budget staff. But, I, it would seem to me that every four or five years, that the district would engage in that, and I would recommend whoever's working on the, well, maybe, maybe I'm working on that, the OE. Am I working on the financial ones? Because that would be something that we may want to add as a policy, that a, a zero-based budget means you start over, and you justify every dollar that goes into the budget versus taking the budget that you've had and just adding on to it. And when you do that, nothing ever comes off of it, right? And which, I mean, I, I'm sure that we have some programs that are not as effective as they once were, and it's an opportunity to just shine a light on the entire budget. And so, that's one thing that, that I would recommend as we start the OE process to review. I want to go to this slide that's, that's up here. It's a bit of a follow-up from Latoya. So, what I read on here is we're cutting two-point-five and adding one-point-five, right? That's what's on this slide.
In terms of the strategic budget additions and subtractions, yes.
And then, can you go to the slide that has the increases?
So, that, so that factors in enrollment-based decisions for staff.
So, what I, what I think is, what I want to know is, what's the net increase or the net decrease of hiring?
That's this slide.
So, this is net?
Yes.
So, where are the, where, where, I'm confused on where the two-point-five reduction shows up then? And where's the one-point-five addition? Is that the transfer service?
I'm trying to figure out, what's the net change in hiring? I don't care if it's strategic or, or, or what.
But, it was minus, I was too, because it's reduced two-point-five on strategic, and I don't see minus two-point-five.
Yeah. Because I, I get what you're saying here, but it's not the same information that was on the other slide, that has a reduction of two-point-five FTE, and then an increase of one-point-five FTE, which is an, which is a, a decrease of one FTE. So, are we really only hiring two people?
So, there's a combination between budget initiatives and enrollment. Sometimes I classify them as enrollment increases, and sometimes it's budget initiatives. So, I can clear that up, but it, the net increase, the budget's three.
Because that just doesn't make sense then, because if, if the net increase is three, you're missing, the net increase would really be two.
No, this, we need to do something about this microphone. By the way, the, no, it's, the budget initiatives, again, I'll, I'll, maybe I'll send them, we'll do their email to the board. The difference is how I classify some things as enrollment, and some things as a budget initiative. I can see what you're saying, that the budget initiative line should be different. All I'm saying is, when I did this slide, I said, is that enrollment or is it budget initiatives? And I probably just labeled it wrong on this slide.
Right, because you could classify the Prairie View psych addition
Correct.
as enrollment, because it's based on the ratios being different. So, we can put together a total plus-minus. This is the net. So, the, what shows up on the budget initiatives page is factored into here with other things that are enrollment-based.
Would budget initiatives just be missing the minus, perhaps?
No. I probably put too much detail on here, because we shouldn't bring it into this much detail. Again, it, the difference is, like Nick said exactly right, even though that, on that slide, it said the Prairie View psych was a budget initiative, I probably, when I was going through this, oh, that's enrollment, and that's why I put down as enrollment.
So, so, what's the budget initiative one-point-oh, new FTE? What is that position?
I'd have to, I'd have to go back in my notes and see what I said for that one.
So, but, it would be a, it's a professional educator position, right?
Well, it's, all of it's professional.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
So, it's, it's like the, the high school counselor position
Okay.
would be the plus-one, I think. So, we, but again, we can line it out. This also includes all of the, we're up one fourth-grade teacher at this school and down one sixth, or sixth-grade teacher at that school, and we're up point-five of a teacher here, and because of enrollment shuffling across the district. So, that's all factored into the global of what this shows.
So, the, the, and it's only a position, but I'm, I'm just trying to make sure that I understand. So, the reduction on the previous slide, that's just factored in, and you've hired somebody for that, that's not in the three, correct? Because there's, there's a, there's a reduction on, sorry, Sean Do to make you keep going, or whoever's doing it. Are you doing this?
I am.
It's just magically happening. Anyhow, let's, let's, let's move on.
Yeah, we'd be happy to share, like, here's what's captured in this line, here's what's captured in this line. Again, there's positions that go up and down every year based on where the students are.
That I get.
And that nets out a negative or a positive. And then, the purpose of the previous slide with the budget initiatives is just to show the strategic adds. And then, the purpose of the second one is to say, when strategic adds and subtractions and enrollment-based fluctuations all pan out, this is, this is the net.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry, it's not.
Oh, no, it's, it's probably, it's probably me. It, it, and it doesn't matter. Do we have comparable data related to class sizes within Dane County in our comparables? Because that would be something I think that I'd like to see, because we, we rely on our class size, but I have no idea where we are even in Dane County. And I don't know if that's possible to get something like that, but I think, because we are always talking about class sizes, but there's no comparative data to let us know it, like, is it, is it favorable? Are we in the middle?
Yeah, someone would probably have to call each school district and ask.
And I don't want that to happen. I would, that's why, that's why I asked if, if, if we had it. I think it'd be, if, if we don't have it, I don't want anybody to go through the work of doing it, but if we had it, it would be, it would be helpful. Then, the piece that I want to make sure that I'm clear on, if the referendum passes in November, there are no FTE positions in that.
Correct.
Where is, I brought this up about a month ago, which is still a concern of mine, that there are no operational positions, like even here, where the three teachers. And every year, I always feel like we're not adding enough operational side-of-the-house positions. And so, and I'm not looking for an answer now, but I would like a follow-up to what I asked about a month ago in terms of, I know that the operational side has some needs, and I'm, I'm, I continue to be curious as to why we're not seeing those come through in terms of potential new, new positions. Knowing that, yes, we're not, we don't have a lot of money to hire additional FTE, but, I mean, we, we have a budget initiative here, and it just always seems like there's not anything added to the operational side. And I, I'm just curious about that.
Yeah, I appreciate that Steve has the ultimate advocate for operations, right? Like, I can promise that when we need things, we will ask.
Yeah.
And it's not, the exercise this year, as you saw with the subtractions and the additions, was to live within the established parameters and not add unless we could, could subtract. We surfaced the conversation in operations. There was not any, anything that rose up to say, we want to cut something in order to make this add. Six months from now, a year from now, that may change, right? We're going to continue to have conversations. I think it's, as you're, I think, alluding to, it's negligent not to have the conversations and just cast everything forward and pretend everything's the same as it has always been. So, we will continue to have conversations about what's needed, and at this time, we don't, we didn't surface anything.
And I, and I don't want to be involved in those conversations, obviously, but I think it would be helpful for the board just to sort of get a sense, because we are increasing our FT by three. So, those three are not because we've cut. We've, we've done some cutting, but we are increasing by three, and none of it is on the operational side. And that's, that's my only point. And if you don't need anything, then bless your heart. Oh, right now? Yeah. But, I do, no, seriously, I, I think it's a conversation we should be having. And, and I don't know, I think it's great if, if, if we don't, don't need anymore. And I know that you've gotten the message from this board loud and clear that we need to contain. We are ready, I would argue, we have the best staffing ratio in Dane County. I, I'm not sure I'd, I'd include Wisconsin Heights and Marshall. They're not real comparable. I mean, the smaller the school district, traditionally, usually, the higher, the better the staff ratio is because of, of, of the way that it is. But nonetheless, I, I'd like to have that conversation even before we go to referendum, so there's a potential to see what might surface. So, anyway, that's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. I appreciate you asking the question, because I do think it is a little, I, I kind of had a moment too, thinking about, I thought I saw reducing, you know, two-point-five, adding one-point-five, why are we adding three? It wasn't quite lining up. So, yeah, later, if you can just kind of help us understand how that worked, that would be great. And then, just building on kind of where Steve and Latoya were going, just looking at that slide nine, this, the strategic part. And maybe it's just because I really like data, but I would just love to, like, have one glance, like peek behind the curtain, one step backwards in terms of how we decided these were the, the specific strategies to highlight or select, in terms of like, and it'll be kind of a similar thing, I say, when we're talking about the referendum and that bucket of educational opportunities, in terms of, are we beginning with our student data? And looking at where do our students need the most, and where are students struggling the most, or, or which of our students are struggling the most? What strategies are attached to their needs? And then, how are we strategically making sure that our money is going where our priorities are? And I'm sure that there was some of that happening as you made all these decisions. I just can't follow the pathway, right? Because we're starting here, and I didn't see, like, the student data that you looked at, and the other options that you had on the list, and then how you came to the conclusion that these were the, the things to select. And I don't know, process-wise, as we talk about, like, the OE around finances and things like that, like what role the board has, we talk about, like, the board's big rocks discussion, but I kind of have trouble following the thread from the boards, like, what we say our priorities are, and then where the strategic, strategic budget items come from, and it feels like there should be a really natural, logical, clear alignment between where the board's saying our priorities are and where the budget strategic priorities land. And I'm just not quite following it yet. That doesn't mean it's there, it just means I, I'm not seeing it in, with the way the data's presented. I don't know if you want to talk about that at all, or that's kind of more of a comment than a question, but.
Yeah, I mean, the outcome of that was actually probably several hours of cabinet discussion over the course of six weeks. So, like, I'm not prepared to synthesize all of that right now, but, yeah, and, and I can see in my head, like, where it is and where the lineup is. We tried by indicating, like, this is what we were targeting with the outcome or OE policy, like, this is where our thinking was with this. You know, we'd have to spend some more time to dig in and, and write more of a rationale for each one, which can be done, for sure. That's what we did through those discussions with cabinet members, department heads at those meetings over the course of April, May, June, in order to discuss that. Anytime we talk about making reductions, right, it, it is important to make sure we're not just casting things forward and continuing to do what we've always done, but it's also, if you're going to reduce, you better have a very solid rationale for why we're making those specific reductions and why we're going to repurpose that money in a different way. And so, we had very, very in-depth conversations, particularly with TLE directors around our priorities for SR-two and SR-three, and that's, that's the list that resulted. And so, but we can, we can definitely give more detail and draw more of a line of sight.
Well, and to be clear, I don't want you to waste a bunch of time, like, going back and reinventing the wheel unless other people are interested in seeing it. It's more like moving forward. It would be really nice if it could be documented along the way, so that we could understand, how did we get from the board's priorities that we, you know, we talk about, what, what are the board's priorities for this year? Where do we want to see movement and change in the system, right? To the, the student data that we're gathering, you know, in SR-two, SR-three, and all sorts of other places, what student data are we using, right? And then, tracking the student data, the board's priorities, the conversations, the options that were considered, and then the final decisions that were made, like, if we can make that really clear moving forward. But, I don't want you to spend hours going back and rereading minutes of meetings and trying to, like, recreate that now, because that would just be a waste of time. But, it's more just thinking about how to make that really clear moving forward, if possible. Yeah, I think that's all I had. Did anyone else have anything else to come up for that? Yeah.
I would just like to push back a little bit and just say, like, that's the kind of thing that I think, when we're talking about speaking as one voice from the board, like, that's what you were saying, but then, that's something that we need to discuss as a board and decide, because I don't know that that's, like, maybe six other people want that, but that's why I think we need to be really careful about, is making sure that that's something that we all think that that's what we want, and isn't already something that is provided to us throughout the year already. So, that's just my pushback, and we can move forward from here.
And we are updating our policies, and that'll all be voted on by the full board, so, in the coming year. So, fair enough. Any other comments or questions around any of this? All right. Thank you so much, Phil, for your presentation and your time. I really appreciate it.